Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to your September meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Always good to see folks here. We see some familiar faces. We see some outstanding, rising, young faces that we're going to recognize here in just a little bit, but it's always good. You can join us here in the council chamber if you're at home joining us on TV 6. Thank you very much. Or if you're watching us on a live Facebook. Screaming, yeah, maybe we'll scream. Screaming, we welcome you as well. We'll start our meeting with our roll call and introduction of council members.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane Welch, council member.
Good evening, David Smithman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jean Reed Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Happy Thursday. I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. Thank you, council members. Folks, Bo Howf is going to lead us in our invocation. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Jean Reed Foster. So if you're able, please stand and join us.
Let's pray. God, our Father, you are the giver of all good things, all that we have and all that we are, and all that we have to give is from you. We give you thanks for this beautiful day. We give you thanks for the sunny weather, for the rainy weather that makes all things grow. We give you thanks especially tonight for this town, for its leaders, for its staff, and mostly for its citizens. We ask you to bless this time of meeting together that the council will act wisely and courageously during the course of this meeting. We ask all these things in your holy name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As Dr. Sadler and other council members are so apt to do to remind me when I've forgotten things, I did forget to introduce our staff this evening. Our town interim manager, Stacy Tolbert; our town attorney, Bo Howf; our sergeant of our community policing force, PJ Stringer; our town clerk, Dora Moore; and our town finance director, Pam Orell. I think that's everyone. Very good. Council members, we have had just one addition to the agenda since it was set out, and that'll be under new business 12. It'll be E. And I've asked our town clerk to add that because I believe we probably need to just take a quick look at our remote meetings policy in consideration of some opportunities that are going to be coming up here shortly. Are there any other additions, changes, revisions? Not want to entertain a motion, please.
Second.
I think Ms. Welch made the motion. Mr. Smithman made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Council members, I also have a note here to remind you that if you speak, please either move your, as our attorney says, "Bring the mountain to Mohammed or take Mohammed to the mountain." Bring your microphone closer to you or move closer to the microphone so we can be sure we get a clear audio rebroadcast on TV 6. So if you'll do that, that would be great. Stacy, you want to walk us through our consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda for tonight, resolution 2022-053, the financial statements for the one month ended July 31, 2022. Approval of agenda briefing minutes for August 4, 2022. Approval of closed session minutes for August 4, 2022. Approval of regular meeting minutes for August 11, 2022. Approval of closed session minutes, August 11, 2022. Approval of called meeting minutes for August 17, 2022. Approval of closed session minutes for August 17, 2022. Approval of called meeting minutes, August 22, 2022. Approval of closed session minutes, August 22, 2022. Approval of called meeting minutes, August 25, 2022. Approval of closed session minutes, August 25, 2022. And lastly, resolution 2022-054, accepting the resignation of Susan Frye from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Ms. Orell, have you anticipated my question?
Everything is in good shape.
That's in reference to our financial standing. Alrighty. And Susan, I see on here that you're going to be resigning. You have resigned from our Parks and Rec Board. Let me just say thank you so much for the leadership you provided, your service for six years.
About six years.
Just about six years. Well, thank you very much. We're going to miss you. I hope you'll stick around. I've got a project for you when you get back from Maine and watching the autumn leaves.
I'll be dead in lines.
Very good. Council members, if there are no changes on the consent agenda, entertain a motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy, you want to bring us up today in our often continuing public hearing?
Uh, thank you.
Oh, I jumped a page.
Yep.
Don't jump a page, Mike. I just want to keep PJ sitting here until the end of the meeting like we did last time. PJ, you're on the stage.
Good evening. If you pull up the spreadsheet, our stats for the month of August, 612 total calls for service with 293 of those being security checks, 44 traffic violations, 26 alarms, and still running about a five-and-a-half-minute response time. So we're up and running with our new deputy, and I wanted to tell the council to let you know that we really appreciate your support going forward with adding this position. The folks, the guys that work out here, and Lady, they are very appreciative, and it seems to be working well. So we're grateful to have the council and staff as always supported us. We appreciate that. If you'll pull up the safety tip, I just wanted to talk just briefly, and I won't hold you for just a second, about some seatbelt usage. If you've noticed in the news, there's been an increase in traffic fatalities. A lot of that comes from seatbelt use. I just want to remind everybody that seatbelts are required for anybody that's in the front or backseat. That comes with $154 court costs. There's no fine associated with that. It's just a straight court cost. So I know people have mixed reviews about seatbelts, but look at it like this. How safe are cars made now with all these airbags and sensors and everything? Keep in mind that if you're in a rollover crash, you've got to stay inside your vehicle in order for that safety features to do its job. That's why the seatbelt's important. Alright? So just a friendly reminder, everybody, put your seatbelt on. It will save your life. Alright? If nobody has any questions, I'm going to go home since the mayor can't hold me long.
Thank you, PJ.
Any questions for PJ? PJ, let me thank you for the deputies and, of course, our fire departments from Vianna and Lewisville, along with our Public Safety Committee for holding their Public Safety Day last weekend. It was great to be out there, and I took a ride in the simulator that simulated a head-on from five miles an hour, and my attorney will be contacting you shortly.
You have to stick your strong way.
Just before we move on, I know we're going to come to this item later on, but you had an opportunity to help us better understand the necessity for one of the items that's coming up under a new business, and that's these lights. Would you speak about it just for a minute?
So what I've put together is, we were noticing that the traffic around the events, if anybody comes to the town events, Town Square, what we've been doing is a lot of the foot traffic crawls from the shopping center across North Street. Obviously, we can't shut North Street down. There's houses, people in and out of there. So people that typically park at the shopping center, around the square, post office, annex, they'll be crossing the streets, and then we have a lot of foot traffic. So when people leave, what we try to do is we send everybody down Great Wagon Road and out Bellman. That gets people, allows people to cross over North Street and keeps the automobile traffic at a minimum. Okay? So we're not going to stop at 100%, but it seems to be very effective. And then people coming out of the annex and stuff like that, out of David Key, we try to get those to make left turns. So the theory is to divert all the automobiles away from pedestrian traffic and let everybody get to their car. The problem with it is, is North Street, there at the entrance to the shopping center and out in front of the Town Square and even down at the annex, those are all intersections that are very dark and people crossing the road. There's no amount of resources that we can make everybody cross in a certain way. They're going to cross wherever they come out of the square. So we're hoping to put these lights in place. What we're asked for is to try to get four of those lights, to put them in each corner to try to help not only the deputies be seen in the road, but also motors traveling up and down to Shallowford or on North Street to see these pedestrians. Because these concerts and events are just getting bigger, and that's a testimony to the kind of stuff that they have. But we've got to make some changes before somebody gets hurt.
Thanks.
Thank you, Doc Sadler.
Yeah, for bringing that up. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, anything else for PJ? Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Ms. Moore.
Yes, sir. In front of you is a request to declare September 17 through the 23 Constitution Week. So I present that to you.
Very good. Council members, can you read this or do you wish me to read it?
I'd have to read it.
Very good. So this is a proclamation 2002-05, Constitution Week, September 17 through 23, 2022. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dictated to rule by law and not by individuals, and whereas September 17, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention of 1787, and whereas in celebrating the anniversary of this significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Now therefore, I'm Mike Horn in the Lewisville Town Council hereby proclaim September 17, 2022 as Constitution Day and as September 17 through 23, 2022, as Constitution Week. In Lewisville, we urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals established by the framers of the Constitution as we work with each other to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity proclaimed this eighth day of September 2022. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, you have some recognition for us.
Yes, sir. We have a couple of our student leadership students in the audience with us today. If you would stand, I don't mean to embarrass you, but this is just two of the 21 students who participated in our summer student leadership one-day session on August 16. We had middle and high school students, and it was a day field of learning about local government. There was a lot of information given to them. They were able to experience the drone from Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. They visited the Lewisville Fire Department. They got presentations on finance, planning, local government in general, stormwater, public works. And I think that's just about everything. So it was a lot of information given to them in a very short period of time. We received back post-session surveys from all of the participating students, and overall, it was a very good experience. The students enjoyed it. It was our first one-day session, so there's a lot that staff learned from it, how we can make it better for future events. But we appreciate these students being with us tonight and last month. So thank you.
Council members, any comments? A number of you dropped in during the leadership day. Ms. Welch.
I would say I really enjoyed the role-playing. Did y'all like that a lot?
Yeah.
But it was wonderful, and thank you, Melissa, for bringing this forward, and Dora for putting it all together, the staff. So glad you're here tonight.
Yes, sir. Ms. Franklin.
I'd like to say that many years ago, when my daughter was about your age and so forth, we established the Student Leadership Committee, and it was an ongoing thing. And as times has changed, and then COVID came in, we pretty much had to end that. And I'm so glad that it picked back up. And our first try at a day was such a success. I'm sure that our staff learned a lot, and you guys have provided feedback of things that might make it better for the next year and future generations. But it's important to get kids your age, I'll just say it that way, involved and get them aware of what is happening in the real world that we live in. And again, like I say, my daughter was your age when we first got things and got students involved, and now I've got a grandbaby that I just visited in San Antonio with her this past weekend. So, you know, it just delights the heck out of me to see that this happened and all.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, and I have a comment. I just want to thank the staff for putting something together so quickly, from David, who went and got the food and did all of the food, bringing that in, to you guys. And Dora, you did a fantastic job. I've gotten four or five comments from residents about how well it was put together. So thank you. And thank you to you guys out there in the audience that participated in the mock session with me. It was a lot of fun. So thank you.
And a final shout-out to the parents.
Very good.
Who support the kids and make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Very good. We do understand, you guys can validate this, that the finance presentation was particularly riveting. Yeah, I'm not seeing, yeah, we got some head shaking. Okay, good. That's the appropriate response. Thanks, guys. We're glad.
Yeah, I hope you'll come back for some more.
Hopefully you'll think about doing it again.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the time where we have an opportunity for our citizen public forum, and that's where residents can come forward, speak to the council on anything that's on your mind. There's your opportunity to talk to us. We sit here and listen. Please come forward if you're interested in speaking. State your name, your address, and let us hear what you have to say. Anyone wish to address the council? Very good. If not, there are comment sheets on the back table should you wish to leave a written comment. Folks watching at home, if you wish to make a comment, you can certainly do that and send it to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, and we'll make them part of our record. Ms. Moore, we have some appointments.
Yes, sir. Before the council is a request from Jennifer Hayden to serve on the Beautification Committee as well as the Environmental Conservation Sustainability Committee. The first one is Appointment Order 2022-008 for her service on the Beautification Committee.
Please.
So move.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you and congratulations.
And the second appointment order is 2022-009 for her to serve on the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee.
Council members?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous, and congratulations again.
Thank you, council.
Now we're to the point where I was five minutes ago.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Tonight before you, we had continued the UDO L167 Lewisville Royal Overlay Text Amendment for Ordinance 2022-09. As mentioned in previous council meetings, we have continued this once more due to it being sent back to the Planning Board in order for the Planning Board to just keep taking a stab at it and keep working towards what we feel will be the right thing to bring back to council. They were unable to hold their public hearing at their August meeting, and so therefore we are still holding out. We're still at the drawing board, and we ask for probably about a 60-day continuance this time. In order for them to, they want to get it right. They're doing their due diligence with research, with talking to experts in the field about development, about the things that we're facing in our rural areas, how our planned residential developments work, what can make them better for the town. And so I come to you tonight to ask for yet again another continuance for this public hearing.
Any questions for Stacy? Very good. Stacy, I think the key word's there. We're taking our time because it's an important ordinance, and we want to make sure it's right.
It is. It's very important.
Very good. 60 days would put us at our October.
November meeting.
November meeting. Okay, very good. Council members, may we have a motion, please, to continue this public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Was it Ms. Welch who made the second? Any discussion? And this is to continue for 60 days until our November council meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ms. Foster, I believe you and Ms. Moore have an update on our boards and committees project.
My town clerk, Dora Moore, did a great job at our briefing with this material, so I'll let Dora.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, Ms. Foster. So just a brief update on the boards and committee status update. As you know, this has been a project that's been worked on for, I believe, almost two years. We are finally to the point of finalizing some areas, and one of them is the plan of works. We have come to you several times over the last several months about that, but we have requested all of the boards and committees to have those to us by September 30. And right now, we are only lacking two. One of them's supposed to be to me by the end of this week and one by the end of next week. Once we receive those, staff and the board and committee work group will look over them, share any comments, any questions we have with the committee chair, and then those will be brought to the council at your October agenda briefing for your review. And then that will give you an opportunity to make comments, notes, whatever, from there as well. The next item is the orientation video we released a couple of months ago. That is on the town's website. It has also been emailed to all of our board and committee members. But to ensure that all board and committee members have viewed it, Stacy Tolbert and I will be attending the committee meetings, committee and board meetings, excuse me, during the month of September and October to ensure everyone is able to view the video and ask questions. This will be an opportunity for them to view it and ask us as staff any questions that they may have. And the final thing is, the work group is working on an exit survey currently. We have an electronic survey that we are tweaking a little bit. This is a survey that would be given to any board or committee member who resigns or chooses not to reapply for reappointment. So we hope to have that finalized soon.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Moore?
I have a question.
Or Ms. Foster?
Do we have a couple openings at this time? And how do residents go about, can they just apply in the middle of the year for openings?
So you can apply anytime during the year for a committee. Our boards have staggered terms. So we have advertised in the Lewisville Citizen about the two Parks and Recreation Board openings we have. I believe it's on Channel 6, and I don't know if it's been on social media yet or not, but I can touch base with our communications specialist to see if she can put that out there for us.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Folks, I'm not sure if you caught some key words that our clerk just presented to us, but it was Ms. Tolbert and Ms. Moore will be attending all of the board and committee meetings during the month of September. Most people don't realize that in addition to their regular daily jobs here at Town Hall, they have additional responsibilities of supporting our boards and committees. So a number of nights away from their families, they attend these boards and committee meetings, serving you as well, but also to provide the guidance and support to our committees. So thank you all for doing that. I know September's going to be an awfully busy month for you guys. Alrighty. Stacy, since PJ has left, we've had the Cliff Notes on this, but you want to do the next item on the radar?
Yes. For Ordinance 2022-047, this is a budget amendment to purchase radar for Sergeant Stringer's new patrol car in the amount of $2,165. A little bit of background on this, since we were able to add an additional deputy to our community policing for Lewisville, that new deputy took PJ's old car, and so PJ was issued a new car. The town is who provides radar and those types of things for them to be able to do that for Lewisville. So that is why he's in need of a new radar for his new car.
Very good. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the lifespan on those?
Oh, my goodness, I have no idea. I can check that for you.
Alright, thank you.
Let's see. We installed, the last car that we had has been four or five years.
Okay.
And I think, although I think they can move the radars from car to car, but in this case, we have a new car, so we need a new radar.
Yeah, we had a case one time where there was one of our deputies responded, and he was out of town somewhere, but anyhow, his car burned up and burnt the radar up, so we had to replace that one. So, yeah.
Very good. Entertainer motion, council members, please.
So move.
I think Mr. Smithman makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Stacy, this was the item that PJ addressed earlier?
Yes, sir. Our Ordinance 2022-048, a budget amendment to purchase four mobile LED tower lights in the amount of $13,196. As Sergeant Stringer mentioned earlier, he held up a picture so that you could see the lights that we're looking at. Our public work staff did some research to try to find the best option they thought would fit for what they want to use it for. They're mobile, so they not only can be used for the events, but in the, you know, say for instance, a bad storm comes through and there's a tree blocking the road, they can take them at night to help assist them in work as well during those types of things or those types of situations. So we, these are in stock, so we're hoping that we, in the very near future, can go ahead and purchase at least one pending the approval of the budget amendment so that we can try it out, make sure it is exactly what we want, what we're looking for, how it is and how staff is able to utilize it. And so then we can get the other three for a total of four is what we would like to purchase.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertainer motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Stacy, lights for Jack Warren.
Okay. The next thing is Ordinance 2022-049, a budget amendment to retrofit post-lights and reinstall and retrofit post-lights at Jack Warren Park in the amount of $3,090. The lights at Jack Warren Park are, I'll probably say, out of date. They need to be updated. They currently aren't working, and so in order to get them working, we do have to modernize the type of bulbs, to go to LED, those types of things that are already currently there in the lights for Jack Warren Park. And so this will help us do that, all of the retrofitting that has to happen for the new updated technology as well.
Very good. Any questions?
Yes, please.
Ms. Welch.
It's a tie. Ms. Tolbert, since safety with light is so important, how long would you anticipate before this work can be completed?
Pam, do you have any idea about that as far as the contract goes? I don't think it's too far out. That's why we wanted to go ahead and do a budget amendment now. And we've already got the quotes and everything in order for this work to be done from an electrician that we work with very often. So I wouldn't think that it would be that far, or it would be more in the near future than further out.
Thank you. Ms. Foster? It's age before beauty.
So can you just speak to how they sit with our lighting ordinance?
Yes. We have taken a look at our lighting ordinance. We compared it to the lighting that is already in existence at Mary Alice Warren Community Yes. We have taken a look at our lighting ordinance. We compared it to the lighting that is already in existence at Mary Alice Warren Community Center to make sure that it does not cast additional lighting, too much lighting on area residents, and that it does meet the standards of our lighting ordinance in our UDO.
Alrighty. No other questions? Entertaining motion, please?
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Council members, we've been talking about installing solar panels on the Mary Alice Warren Community Center for several months now. We reflect back to a resolution that we passed in 2021, which indicated the town wanted to reduce their reliance on, or increase their reliance on renewable energy and decrease their reliance on coal, other types of, of electric power generation. We have talked to three companies, we've actually talked to four companies, and there's a spreadsheet in front of you, so you can kind of refer to that. We've talked to four companies. One in particular probably dropped out because of their pricing was a little higher, but oddly enough, the other three, as you can see, were very, very close, so it would indicate that we have some excellent bids on this. A couple of things that I want to point out. Number one is, if you look at the price quoted, the original price quoted, and I'll just, I'll just use NC Solar Now as the top one. It was seventy-eight, it was $71,820. We believe that we will qualify for a Duke rebate of about $20,000. It could be a little more, it could be a little less, just depending on what the final dimensions of the, of the system are, specs of the system are. Our net cost would be roughly $51,800. You can see the, the comparison of our costs per watt, so they're all, they're all very close. The exciting thing that I told you last night that we would share tonight that I think is amazing is that we discovered that in the most recent, the, it has nothing to do with inflation, no, not inflation, Reduction Act.
IRA.
IRA. Okay, there we are. There is a provision specifically for the installation of solar. And if you do that in 2023, there is a direct payment to nonprofits of 30% of your installation costs. So if you roll that through, you can see how a $71,000 system quickly turns into a $36,000 cost on our part. I think this is a great opportunity to be able to jump and do this now. What I would ask council members is, we have just a couple of loose ends that we want to tie up, particularly on the warranty provisions, and we want to be sure that they can meet our, these companies can meet our timeframe. We do have to apply for the Duke Energy Credit, probably no later, get our application and no later than December 1st, maybe the middle of December, to qualify for this year. So what I'd like to ask council for approval on is to, in principle, approve an expenditure around $35, maybe $40,000 to, for us to be able to move forward. We will then begin working with these individual companies to finalize one that we would select and then formalize their contract and bring that contract back to council to approve in October. That would be the request to you all. Any questions?
I have a question, please, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So there were three companies you were researching. Can you tell us if they were all in business about the same time? If they had pretty much an equal reputation? How is all that determined?
Yeah, all these folks have been around at least 10 years, between 10 and 15 years. The, I'll call your attention to the, the, the consumption offset, which is really important to us. And remember, I referenced a 50% reduction on traditional energy sources by 2030. If you look at the consumption offset, this is, this is where one really jumps out at us. Renewable Energy Design Group proposes a system that will give us a 60% reduction in our consumption at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Again, we'll verify those numbers and everything once we have the final system design. If you look at the other consumption offsets by the other companies, they were in the mid-40s. To answer your question, one of the things that we want to do is, in the next week or so, follow back through with some of their references and some of their previous jobs and just verify the fact that they, they perform on time and budget. But what I'd like to do is be able to do that with all three companies and then, then come back with a contract for you in October.
Mayor, is this just Mary Alice Warren? This is, okay.
Yeah. And, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
So, I'm not really sure I'd interpret what I'm looking at. So where it says performance there, it says warranty, and then, and so the warranty, these other headings relate to warranty? Is that what those are?
They, they do. Performance is the, the warranty against system degradation.
Okay.
So each one of these companies will guarantee the performance of the system they install for those periods of years. The panels, obviously, are the warranty on the solar panels. The inverter is the piece of equipment that you have to have to convert. The labor is the installation, of course, and then the penetration, which I thought was interesting. If you gather, I've been doing some homework on solar panels, but penetration is actually where they attach them to the roof, and they have to penetrate the roof to attach them to the rafters. Well, there are warranties that our roof will not leak, and if it does, it will be replaced under, or the leak will be fixed, the roof replaced under these warranties.
So under the renewable energy, there's no number?
There is. I'm sorry, there's a 25-year number. I got that at about 6:30.
Okay.
Tonight.
Alright. And NC Solar, the panels have a 25-year warranty, and the labor 25 years, under renewable energy, then we'll give you a five-year on labor? Is that, is that the way to read this?
Yeah, that's one of the things I want to discuss with them.
Alright. You want, you want a motion for, in principle?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Please.
I'll make that motion.
For?
To move forward.
Yeah, but I think the mayor asked for an amount to, to be.
Yeah.
In that motion.
Not, not, well, I'll give a not to exceed number.
Good, yeah, let's do that.
I'll do a not to exceed $37,000 based on the representations made in this, in this spreadsheet that we have.
Ken, if you'll give us a little more leeway on that, because
How much more leeway do you want?
I would say $40,000, because these companies are going to have to come and do the interior inspection.
That's fine. So then I would make a motion that we approve the expenditure not to exceed $40,000 for the installation of these solar panels as described in the spreadsheet that we've been provided, and pending your additional discussions regarding penetration, warranty, well, not penetration, you have that 25 years, but, but labor warranty, and, and I would say also panel life warranty, because 15 years, I mean, this other one is sort of, yes, it's 12 to 20, I guess you do an average there. That may get about 16 if, if it falls in the average. Anyway, I mean, is that kind of the direction you would go?
That would be my motion then.
Excuse me, mayor?
I need, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are you asking for a budget amendment right now?
Not right now, just, just the, if I understand the motion correctly, it's for us to be able to move forward to begin discussions with these companies and then come back in October, hopefully with a contract that doesn't exceed $40,000.
Okay, so you're not committing us to an expenditure until we actually sign a contract?
Till the contract comes back in October.
I just wanted to make sure.
The motion is an in-principle motion to, well, just what he said, basically, and what you said too.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, um.
Second yet?
No, I, I don't think so.
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Smithen.
Okay, my question. So I'd shared with council before that my husband and I have installed solar on our barn, and we did not get the Duke rebate. It's almost a little bit of a Wild West where you, there's no guarantee, you have to sign up by a certain time. It's a little odd. Maybe it's different between residential and commercial. So that's, that's one piece in terms of not necessarily attaching to the rebate. But certainly the, the Inflation Reduction Act, that's, that's great news. But, but my question is, especially, Ken, you were talking about, Dr. Sadler, you were mentioning not to exceed. The price, though, is 71 to 82,000. The amount that you were talking about is a possible final cost, and that, that is dependent upon whether or not we get the Duke rebate.
Correct.
Which is not a guarantee. So I think when we get to that point.
That's a good observation.
Yeah, so.
And, and that Duke rebate, we've talked with the regional representative, and he's indicated that there is money available for nonprofits.
Jimmy.
Yeah. And, and again, you have to apply for it. There's no guarantee that they'll give it to you, but the indications are that the money is there, and if we make the correct application, we should, we should be, feel, feel optimistic that we would receive that.
Okay, yeah. That's fine.
And if not, it'll be a different number coming back to talk about.
But for tonight, we're not talking about a number anyway. We got that cleared up. We're just talking about the in-principle to move forward with your pursuits and discussions. Okay, thank you.
And what I wanted to do is just kind of give you all a scope. It wasn't going to be $100,000. It was going to be kind of closer to these numbers that we're talking about here. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, council.
You also had some, I know we're done with that motion, but you also have some payback return on investment, number two, don't you?
Yeah. And that'll be, that'll be rolled into whatever the final, it, it ranges from nine and a half years to 11 years, I think, depending on the company we select. But again, all this is dependent on, they've got to get under our roof. They've got to look at, at what we, and, and again, we have built the community center with conduit and the ability to already connect to solar. We've put in the support beams in there to, to have solar, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of surprises there for folks.
Mayor, does it make sense to, while they're looking at that, for them to look at other facilities that we have? I mean, such as Town Hall or anything else? I mean, is there any kind of additional necessity?
That's a great question. I, I would say that we would have them look at, if we wanted to, we would have them look at Town Hall. I don't know if we would want to look at, I don't think the annex probably is constructed enough to support solar panels, but Town Hall should be.
South, right? Yeah, it's got to be. It's all about exposure and trees and.
And I think we should, we should have them take a look at it, and they can give us a reading of, yeah, it's worthwhile to look at it or not.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll kind of roll that in there.
Okay.
Outstanding, folks. I'm excited about this. I know there's a 101-year-old lady who has wanted to be kept up to date on solar panels on her community center, and so she'll, she'll be very excited about this initiative that we're going to ready to take. Alrighty. Ms. Moore, you have the next item, please.
Yes, sir. The mayor requested that I review the remote meeting policy. As you know, during COVID, full remote participation was permitted, and now the state of emergency has lifted. Elected boards cannot have fully remote meetings. However, if you've got a remote attendance policy, you can dictate how remote attendance is going to be. And the council has a remote policy that was adopted initially in 2017, revised in 2020, and in your agenda packet, there were some proposed revisions that Beau and I looked at in comparison to what the School of Government's law bulletins and blogs have come out with. So one of the questions, well, I'm sorry, let me take a step back. Your policy as it is currently written does not permit any remote participation during a closed session. So that was one of the areas we were requested to look at. And in reviewing those law bulletins and the blogs, there is nothing prohibiting remote participation in closed session. So the red line version in front of you reflects that remote participation may be allowed during open and/or closed sessions, and it still prohibits it for any hearings. So a quasi judicial hearing, a public hearing, none of that would be permitted. And I'm sorry, I'm looking just to see what else is on here. So that's basically the main changes we have made to this document to assist you. Our attorney, Mr. Huff, I think would like to caution you just a little bit, so I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
So I don't want to spend my time on this. There are statutes that don't, that aren't really, really, really clear about this. There's a statute that allows for electronic meetings, but there's also a statute that talks about attendance. In 168, it talks about attendance of council members, and one of the things it says is that you be present. The word present is not defined, but there, some of the School of Government blogs have talked about Vermont cases and some other cases in other states that have interpreted present to include remotely present, virtually present. But we don't have anything in North Carolina, and there's, it's not been tested with any case law, so, you know, what I would urge you to act conservatively, which would deal with a couple of things. One, not to use anyone in remote attendance to fulfill a quorum. So for example, if you were only to have three people present, don't have four people remote, you know, even if they need all the qualifications and the policy as it may be amended if you pass it. I would say, make sure you have a quorum. We've already talked about not doing quasi judicial with public hearings using remote, at least where somebody's vote's going to be crucial to the passage or the non-passage of whatever is for you. And, and I.
Ratification of votes.
Come back afterwards, if there's, if there are any close calls about things that you can come back in your next meeting where, in which everyone is present, Doris can put back on the agenda to say, at your last meeting, at which two people appeared remotely, this past, but we needed the votes of one of those people to pass, to pass the thing, we, you know, asking council to consider ratifying what occurred during that past meeting. I think we did, we've done that in the past before with, with situations kind of like this, so. But again, it, it, there's, there's no surefire interpretation of this ordinance. There's blogs going back to Freddie Blue Stees in 2013. It's been looked at in 2018, 2020, and now post emergency order, and there's still no absolute determination about that, but legislature has not seen fit to fully define all of, all of these terms. And so I just, you know, I, I think this policy is good. It's not bulletproof, but I think it's good, and I think as long as you don't use, again, remote attendance to create a quorum, I think you're going to generally be okay. Nothing is, you know, nothing is absolutely certain, but I feel pretty good about the policy, and I'd recommend you pass it if. The good thing about this one is it allows you to, we've had a number of closed sessions, which I think was the impetus for looking at this again, and we've had to have, under a couple of different circumstances, a need for closed sessions, and this would allow you to do those, you know, to allow some of you to attend remotely if, if the need were, were there.
Can, can I ask you a question just on that there? We cannot conduct a meeting as a whole and a closed, especially a closed session Zoom-wise, or any meeting Zoom-wise?
Yeah, as an elected body, you cannot say we're going to have a Zoom meeting to meet on anything.
Like we used to six months ago?
Yes, sir. As you put it, under the emergency order. The emergency order lifted with it, you're right to have Zoom meetings.
Okay.
And I think I did change one other word. I think I loosened it just a little bit. The word in, in section 1D where it says impossible, I suggested the change of the word to impractical, so that you've got at least a little bit more room to move there, because, you know, there's very little that's impossible, so I would make it impractical.
Any questions? And just to underline this, we anticipate that over the next several months and potentially longer than that, we will have a need to have an increasing number of closed sessions to discuss a particular issue, recognizing that a number of our council members sometimes are out of town, and trying to arrange schedules that coincide with everybody being in one place at one time can be difficult. And we'll, we will need to be in a position where we can respond quickly to some of the things that we may be asked to respond to.
Mayor, we'll need to have at least a quorum in person.
That's what Beau's suggesting, right?
Okay.
Strongly suggest that.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Beau.
Any other questions?
You, you said you strongly suggest that. It's in here.
I believe it is in there, isn't it? Is it not?
I don't believe so. It said, the way it's currently worded, it says a quorum may be established by the remote participation of one or more council board or committee members, so we could strike out that.
Well, what I would recommend is we leave that as it is, and you've heard my caution to you, and that way, in, in what I hope will be the fortunate event that this gets interpreted to allow quorums to be created, you want to come back and redo your policy.
What the practice you're suggesting is that you have an in-person quorum, is that right?
Whether, whether the policy says to do it or not.
So if the minutes could reflect that.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. And this will be for boards and committees as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That way they can see it, boards and committees can see that recommendation.
Do, do boards and committees have closed sessions?
We didn't, no, they don't have closed sessions, but this covers open and closed sessions.
Open and closed sessions, okay.
What this policy did was add closed sessions. What this, what this policy did was add closed sessions to, previously, you couldn't, the council could not hold closed, no one could attend remotely a closed session. This would allow you to do that.
So can you project that policy? I mean, can you put it up here?
Oh, yes, sir.
Just so that folks who are watching can see what we're talking about.
So this is the policy. The first page is the resolution approving your policy. And then the second page is where the remote participation policy already begins. And you can see the red line in it at the top. It's just changing your resolution number. But as you scroll on down, I'm sorry, this computer is not working very well tonight. You can see where we removed closed session from not being allowed to being allowed. So item two permits it, and item three removes it from the prohibition. And then on the second page, and I apologize, also in 1D, you can see where we changed impossible to impractical.
Right.
And then the second page, item seven adds, again, that closed session can be done remotely as well.
Any additional questions?
I had one, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Dora, would you scroll back to, it kind of gave reasons? Now, would we be held to that, like personal illness or disability employment purposes? Are those are just suggestions of being excused from in-person?
Well, this says you must assert to one or the following.
Okay. I think that's important.
It's certainly not a, I don't feel like going, is a standard. That's not allowed. You need to be, if you're sick, if you're out of town, if you're in a location where you can't, you know, practically make it to the meeting, that last one is, make it logistically impractical to attend. I think that, that may be the closest thing to a catch-all.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Bo. Thank you, Dora.
You're welcome.
No other questions? We'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Ms. Foster makes a motion, Mr. Smithlin makes the second. How did I distinguish between first and second? Flip a coin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Thanks, Bo.
Ms. Talbert?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So for our events upcoming at Shalford Square for the month of September and October 1st, tomorrow night, Friday, September 9th, Clifford the Big Red Dog is going to be showing for a movie night. Bingo will be hosted by the Girl Scouts ahead of the movie, starting at 6:45. The movie will begin at dusk. On Saturday, September the 17th, the Megan Doss Band with special opening guest James Vincent Carroll will be playing from 6:30 until 9:00 PM in the square. On Saturday, October 1st, Eyes of Silver, a Doobie Brothers tribute band, will be playing from 7 to 9. On Saturday, October the 8th, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM, we are having an e-cycle event hosted by Waste Management. You can find more about that on our website and what is permitted, what is not permitted, those types of items. And then later on the day, on Saturday, September the 8th, is the Shalford Bluegrass Concert Series featuring the Lonesome River Band. Mr. Franklin, I know you enjoy that. That will be from 5 until 7:00 PM.
You said September 8th.
October 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then on Friday, October the 14th, will be a final movie night, showing Halloween Town for the spirit of Halloween. So those are our events for the next two months, and there will be concessions at all of those events.
What, what date did you say the Doobie Brothers concert?
The Doobie Brothers, Saturday, October 1st.
October 1st.
No dental consulting on that weekend.
I'll be in Greenville, South Carolina, unfortunately.
Alrighty.
Can you do it remotely?
Okay. I've projected.
FaceTime.
Any questions for Stace? Alrighty.
Okay.
Council members, if you recall, at our briefing, we were talking about our application for additional monies for our Gateway Project. And I think several of you had wanted a refresher on what that project was and where it was and what it was going to do.
So I'm going to try to speak loudly, because I don't have a mic in front of me, but if you recall, the Gateway Project, can everyone kind of attempt to glance at that, for our members of the audience? This is between the two roundabouts on Williams Road. We call it our Gateway Project because it is the gateway into our downtown area. What we had planned for this project in between the two roundabouts is a planted median, so the road will be widened just a little bit. The lanes will be widened in order to accommodate bike lanes. There will be a sidewalk on one side of the road that will connect to the existing sidewalk that goes across the bridge, across 421 on that side, some pedestrian crossing areas. And it will continue to have that turn lane that will, you have to go into the Oak Shopping Center, right there in front of Alex's. The turn lane that is right before that, I think, kind of where the 18 year is, that will be taken out. So the access to the properties will have right in, right out, but then they can simply just go, motorists can go down around the roundabout and go in either direction that they prefer. With this just being such a short distance, that, this was one of the initial renderings that we had of the project, to give you an idea of what it was going to look like out there, once the project was constructed. So, to give you another idea of some beautification that's going to be, that's going to go along with the project, this was the original design for the Gateway Monument signs. There's currently a sign there that will be removed and replaced, as well as another one being replaced. You can see in this rendering on either side, so here and then at the bottom of the rendering there is where the monument signs would go. Everybody can see that. I know this is kind of difficult for everybody to see. But then you can see the plantings, beautification in the roundabout, modifications and upgrades being done to our roundabouts in order, you know, they're stamped, colored, so some of that to be upgraded where it needs it. And then also the landscape and that you can see. So to go back to this, this is the monument sign, or in order to honor our roller mill, that's what, that's where the original design came from. Whenever the project was first proposed, this is late 2018 is when this was initially designed. Any questions?
So part of, at least, what I was wondering about the other night was, how, how did, how did we get down this path in the first place? I mean, I understand the design and all that. I mean, it looks great, but what, what, what was the stimulus that caused us to start thinking about such a project?
Well, I, I think in general, and mayor, you might want to add to this, it was actually prior to me, the previous planner is, who initiated this project, for the call for projects, for the actual application for funding. But I believe, like I said earlier, it's our gateway to our downtown. We wanted that to be a landmark, if you will, for those that are entering off of 421, anybody that, that comes to our downtown area, a gateway to our businesses, to, you know, anything that they may come and utilize while they're coming through town. I don't know if anybody have anything to add to that?
Yeah, our, our history on this project actually goes back to about 2000 and maybe 13 or 14, when Greg Garrett was on the City Winston Salem Transportation Office. And we applied for a study to be done on this gateway area, to see if it was practical, if it was feasible, what it would look like. And that study was, if I recall correctly, was about a, about a $15,000 study. And so based on that, we asked for funding for this project in 2016, was our original funding request. At that point, the project was estimated to cost $1.5 million, give or take a little bit. Pam, you can, you can fill in the gaps.
Correct.
We had, we've put it off, I think, mainly because we, we had some traffic circle construction, we had a bridge replacement, we had a lot of things that were happening. So we put off this particular project until it was more feasible. Unfortunately, we did, we did postpone it through COVID. When did we go back for our additional supplemental? First supplemental?
We did not.
We have not had supplemental on this particular project.
Haven't had supplemental at all, okay.
Right.
So this was still being based on a, on a 2016 estimate. We had COVID, we came out of COVID, and we began saying, let's advance this project forward. For the last 18 months?
Web whereabouts.
About the last year and a half, we've been advertising for contractors to want to do this project. We've had no takers. And it was only this last round of requests for bids that we did receive three bids. I believe one was 3.4 million, one was 2.75 million, and the other was 2.3 million. Am I even close?
2.8 and 2.7.
2.8, yeah, okay. Give, give 100,000 or so. I'm pretty good with my memory. If I can't remember where I am in the agenda, it's hard to believe that I can remember these numbers. So I think what you've, what we've determined, as you see, is that in this period of time since 2016, the project costs have, have literally doubled. The, some of the questions that were asked at our briefing, we, the, the supplemental money that we needed, we made a request to see if it was available through the reserve funds at the North Carolina Department of Transportation, at least through our MPO. And Jim, you had asked a question about where are our pots of money? There is, there is STPDA, which is Small Transportation Improvement Projects. There is CMAC, not to be confused with Bernie Mac. And CMAC is a sidewalk, primarily pedestrian-funded projects. And then there is something called prioritization. And that's a general call for projects that everybody around the state submits projects for, and they're ranked and prioritized. And if you're lucky enough to achieve a high enough score, then your project is awarded funding. This particular project comes out of an SPTDA directly attributable fund. So in that STPDA reserve, there is 1.6 million dollars. We've been advised by the trans-MPO staff to ask for the entire amount for this project. A couple of things I think that we had asked questions about. The next reserve funding, or the next pot of money for reserve funding, doesn't occur until the end of 2023. And at that point, the, the reserve funding will be open again, and everybody will be competing for the dollars for projects that, every project in the state is over, not over budget, but over the estimate, simply because cost of materials, cost of labor, delays, a lot of things that we didn't anticipate back in 2016. Currently, there are no, no other projects requesting money from this reserve. As far as the MPO folks know, there are no other projects that are ready for construction right now, except for ours. We've got engineering, we've got right-of-way acquisitions, so we're ready to, to put the shovels in the grounds. We talked about the initial funding. If we choose not to move forward to this, we won't lose our initial funding of 1.5 million, but we may not be eligible for the 1.6 million, if that makes sense. That we know we have a chance to ask for it now, we may not have a chance to ask for it again, or we can ask, we may not be awarded for it. If we pause the project for more than 60 days, I believe, we're going to have to go back and rebid the project, just based upon what the regulate, what the rules are for STPDA projects. So we would start back into the bidding process again, and we may or may not receive any bids, or the bids that come in may be higher than what we have so far. The North Carolina Department of Transportation projects that there will be no decrease in construction costs for the next three years, that they are seeing consistently high prices of asphalt, consistently high prices for steel, consistently high prices for labor. And they don't see any break in that. So all the projects they are budgeting for the next three years, they're not budgeting any decrease in materials or labor. We could hold off, I think somebody made the suggestion that we hold off for the next prioritization, in which we submit the project again for consideration. We won't qualify for that. This project was already awarded money, so we won't qualify to resubmit this project again. So that kind of puts everything out on the table of where we are. We did submit a letter expressing our interest in receiving the 1.6 million, but I think we wanted to have a little additional discussion about, do we want to put off this project? Do we not want to do this project? Or do we want to go ahead and follow through and make sure that request for the 1.6 million is heard in November?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the beautification of the area, this too will serve as traffic mitigation in the event that our gateway area develops in how many ever year, how many ever years to come? If there were to be some sort of development in that area, the median will serve as that traffic mitigation, so people, motorists aren't making left-hand turns. So it does make it a little bit of a safer aspect as well, going along with the beautification, if, with, with that planted median there as well, so.
The project was always forward-looking. It wasn't necessarily to address an immediate need. It was looking out in time, as you were describing now, what the town might be facing down the road. The other thing we talked about the other night, though, was a potential of, of a need to refund some money from ARPA or something? If, if we, that's been spent, if we don't go forward to project, is that right? I don't recall, I don't know if that was answered.
Pam?
If you don't move forward with the project, you would have to refund, not ARPA, but the STPDA funding would have to go back. And we've spent $400,000 of federal funding so far.
Okay, so 400,000 bucks is sunk.
Yeah.
If, if we do nothing, it's going to have to come from somewhere and go back, to be no longer available to us. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes.
And then we also have our additional match that we put with that. What's our, I think we said our total investment right now in this project is about a half a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty-something.
Fifty-five.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I wasn't here last week for the discussions. I was in the air about this time. But I'm, I'm a bit confused, and I'd like a bit of clarification. I've heard a figure of 1.5, and then I've heard another figure of 1.6. Are we talking two separate figures, and we're going for an additional 1.6?
The, the original product was funded for 1.5.
Right.
And now we've had price increases, we're going back to the reserve for an additional 1.6. So it'll be a total of, the, the total is 3.4 right now, and so we're still going to have to do, there's a little gap in there that we'll still have to fill.
Correct. But we're looking, that we're adding 1.5 plus 1.6 for 3.1 in brown numbers here.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not replacing 1.5 with 1.6.
I wish we were.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
And you'll want to add to that, too, as the mayor mentioned, you've got the 1.5 plus the 1.6 from the reserve, but then we're looking at an additional half a million from the town to make up the difference.
Right.
So.
Okay. I just want to make, be clear on that. I, you know, didn't hear these discussions last week, so that's all the question I have.
Good question.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the overlap, Stacy, on the Great Wagon Road and the, this project, if it were to get pushed through? What would be the overlap as far as construction?
There shouldn't be any construction overlap. Once a contract is signed, the way our contract is written, the contractor would have 300 days to get that completed, which if, if, you know, if we go through that pretty soon, then by the end of next year, the construction of this project should be completed prior to the construction start of the Great Wagon Road project.
Okay. And then I have one other question, sorry, I don't tell. How much sidewalk will we add?
It'll be the linear footage all across one side of the road, not, not both sides, because there's not currently another sidewalk there anyhow. But on the, if you're looking at the map, the northern side of the road, there will be a continual sidewalk added to the area.
Okay, so to just continue from where the roundabout is now, down to the other roundabout?
Yeah, and, and across, it goes across the bridge as well.
Thank you.
And, and recall that there are some enhancements, I'll use that word, at the Liberty Roundabout area.
Yeah, I think there was going to be some landscaping.
Yeah.
I know lighting is going to go in this area where there is no I know lighting is going to go in this area where there is no lighting currently. That's part of the project as well.
Improvements. When, what's the start date again projected for the Great Wagon Road?
2024, Mayor?
In late 2023, early 2024?
Yeah.
Okay, 2024.
If schedules go as they project.
But that could change.
Not a question here. If, so where we're at is, we're looking to pull the trigger, if you will, and take one of these three bids that came in, okay? But we're not guaranteed this additional 1.6.
The?
Or what's the confidence level there?
Yeah, that's, we will know at our September.
November 17th, MPO meeting, or TAC meeting.
Well, you know, Fred, that's a really good point, because if we-
Because I don't want to be left out here hanging if that doesn't come through, if we go ahead and sign a contract for, out of one of these three bids.
The deadline for requesting that money was last week.
Yes, and we are on the Agenda for Information for the TAC Board meeting, in this, at the September meeting. The decision would be made at the November meeting, November the 17th.
Yeah.
Anybody else submitted a letter? Okay, and is it a must-do for them? In other words, is this money that they must award?
It is my understanding that it is not.
So they could just leave it sitting?
I mean, if they don't approve it, then?
No, I understand.
They don't, they have to return it?
Yeah.
They have, they have to.
To the reserves.
It's a reserve fund that has to go back.
Right.
They'd be loath to return it, I suspect. I mean, if they've got a use for it. I mean, is that the history now? Because I can't really recall, for these funds, when they're in reserve and they go, and there are people requesting them, is it unlikely that they would deny the request historically?
Historically, it's not likely.
Yeah, okay.
We've had, we've had three requests out of this reserve in the last year, and all three have been awarded, approved by the TAC. Ms. Franklin, your point's a good point. I would say that we would have a really good feel, and I'll ask the members to give their indication when we do our initial briefing on this in September with the TAC.
I guess where I'm coming from right now, again, I apologize for not hearing all the discussion last week, but I'm good to go with the project. I'm glad we finally got some bids, okay? Even though they're much higher than what we wanted. From what we currently have been expecting to pay and receive in STPDA or whatever funds, I just don't want to see us get left on the hook for this 1.6 if it were to be denied after we've done signing the contract with a contractor.
Yeah, understand your concern.
That's the, that's the timing of things.
And that's why we're going to go through this process, yeah. Because we don't have to, we don't, if, the bid is good for-
Well, we have talked, we have had meetings with the low bidder this week, myself, our contractor, or consultant, excuse me, the contractor themselves, and NC DOT met this week in order to talk about this very issue. So the low bidder is aware and willing to hold their bid, their cost, at the amount given, so we can figure out if we get that 1.6 supplement. Now, they are checking with their subcontractors, and they are going to issue a letter to me for the town that stating in writing that they will hold their bid, so that we will know in order for, if we get the funding, then we would be able to do a contract after that, if we know we get the funding or not. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Howe, is a contingent contract a potential, or even, it may not even be necessary based on?
Well, it sounds to me as if it's not necessary.
Right.
I mean, you can always do a contract that says this is contingent upon the funding.
Right.
It sounds like they're willing to-
Right, okay.
Put off the execution of the contract.
Right.
May make you feel a little bit better to do, to do one, but they're willing to hang on, you know, give you their word that they're going to hold the bid good until November 18 or whenever it is.
And I have asked for that in writing from them as well, so.
So those are the two options.
Well, I would say, Dr. Seven, you raised a good point. I thought about it a little bit more in the intervening 20 seconds, that obviously having a contingent contract is better than having an unenforceable letter.
Right, yeah, yeah, all right.
An understanding.
Okay.
And we can work toward that, too, I believe, as well, yeah. Any other questions? So I guess that what we're, what I'm asking is for council's acknowledgement that we do want to go ahead and move forward with this project, rather than have the money awarded and thus say, sorry, we don't want to do it. So this would be our commitment to do the project.
I'm good with that, and I just want to make sure we get this other chunk of change out here.
Well noted.
Well, if not, we're going to come up well short.
Any other thoughts, folks?
I agree with Councilman Franklin. It ought to be a contingent situation.
I think, I think Ms. Talbott can make that magic happen. And probably the contractor would appreciate that, too.
I think so, too.
All righty. Thank you, council members. That was a good discussion, and I hope you folks watching at home enjoyed it.
What actions necessary, though?
I think just an acknowledgement that we're going to move forward with the, with the project.
You have a motion?
I don't think it, yeah, I don't think it needs to be. I think it, because we already, we already agreed to the project in the first place, we're just kind of restating our commitment to continue it.
The funding?
Yeah.
Little green thumbs-up thing.
We forgot this.
All right, okay.
Very good. Ms. Moore, we're to the clerk's report.
Yeah, Part of Grant, we didn't talk about.
Hi, Ms. Part of Grant. Well, let's, let's, let's crow a little bit.
Yeah, please.
So I'm excited to announce, for those of you who have not already heard, that we were awarded in the most recent 2022 Part F Grant cycle, our Part F Grant application for improvements at Jack Warren Park, to include a nature trail, which would be the trail, a connector path at the park for the playground, to the pavilion for safety of pedestrians, so they don't have to walk through the parking lot, and then also a sidewalk that would connect the trail, the Mary Alice Warren Community Center, and just have a lot more connectivity through the park. Also, an outdoor event space, that would be like a small amphitheater, and then an 18-disc golf course is what we applied for, and we were awarded that. The total award for our grant request was $230,940 that we were awarded.
Say that figure one more time.
Two hundred, $230,940.
Kudos to Ms. Talbott.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I was very excited to hear that.
Yes, and also, Stacy, how many public engagement sessions were held?
We had at minimum-
At least six.
Five or six, yeah. Some of those had to be virtual, of course.
Right.
We were able to have some in person, so we were very pleased with the turnout and the feedback that we got for the, for the grant, for the project, so.
Right, so staff did a great job, and we had a lot of resources, but I think just reinforcing the public engagement, the people coming out and saying, this is what we need, this is what we think, this is what we perceive, this is what the Part F people are looking for, so thank you very, very much for all of you out there who plugged in and made the ask, so, thanks.
And Stacy, I just want to clarify, we are moving forward with design at this time, is that where we're at, where are we at on this particular project?
Well, we are awaiting the official award letter from the governor's office, and then we will have directions for us to move forward with letters of intent to, like, architects. So there's more to come on that, that will come back to council for the project to move forward.
Great, thank you.
And if I remember correctly, on these Part F grants, at a minimum, we've got to match 50% of this, this figure, this $200,030, $30,940.
It's a half a million dollar project.
Yeah, at a minimum, all right.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, any other questions? All righty, Ms. Moore, we're now down to you.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, any elected officials who have not completed the on-demand ethics training that is required and must be completed by October 31st. And if you're okay, since we discussed the student leadership earlier, I would just like to remove that from my report.
Very good. All righty, we do have a placeholder for, always for our community center facilities and program manager report. He'll be coming to us in October?
Yes, he will be at the October briefing meeting to give the quarterly report for the Mary Alice Warren Community Center.
Great, let's see, last night, we were there. Shag dancing was there, the girl stouts were there. Last week, when we had the line dancing, which I believe was on Tuesday night, I walked in and just to see our deputy, Deputy Demetria.
Did she, was she there?
In full uniform, doing line dancing.
That's awesome.
She got off, she got off shift, came in, she heard we had lime dancing, and she was there.
She wanted to go.
And she startled folks when she walked in, they thought something was wrong, and when she jumped in the line and started dancing with them, it was just great, so.
She's great.
We've got a lot of things going on, but we're really beginning to crank that up.
And a number of contract provisions through me on various things, so he's working hard.
That's great, that's fabulous. All righty. Stacy, how about our approval at our last briefing meeting?
Okay, we just had one last week, ordinance 2022046. It was a budget amendment to trim the crepe myrtles at Jack Warren Park for a total of $5,500.
Right. Folks, as you know, we do have a briefing meeting the first Thursday of every month, and occasionally we find the need to take an action at that meeting, and when we do, we like to report it out here at our regular council meetings, so it's part of these minutes as well. We're at the second opportunity for the public, if they wish to speak, to come forward. Any comments you have, you'd like to make, this is our opportunity to listen to you. I see somebody approaching. Please come up, state your name and address.
Stephanie Holcomb, 2169 Benwick Drive, the Pofftown area of Lewisville. And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate way to ask, or just a question, are dogs still not allowed at Jack Warren Park?
Ma'am, they are not.
Can anything be done to ever amend that?
I mean, the easy answer is yes, it can be done, but unfortunately, there's a substantial segment of people with dogs who walk them in the park or in the square that don't clean up after themselves. Yeah, and if you look at the, you look at the light posts around the square, our nice, beautiful green light posts, when you get down to the base of them, all the paint has been corroded off from folks letting their dogs paw us there. I would, I would love to say, let's bring dogs everywhere, because everybody, everybody loves them, and we like to see that, but obviously the issues are that creates a, creates a health hazard and an issue.
Well, just because of the walking trails, it just seems like probably kind of, but is there ever talk, or is this the appropriate way to maybe ask you guys as a town to ever consider putting in a dog park?
Funny, yes.
Funny, you should mention that. Ms. Hunt would love to respond to that.
For a lot of reasons. It just really builds great community. I go to the one at Tanglewood, and it's wonderful, people love it, it's well-maintained, the dogs are well-behaved, it's just a great way to get to know your neighbors, and they're not my neighbors, so I wish we had one over here, since we don't allow them in town square, where there's nowhere to walk them. And, you know, the world is getting to be more and more dog-friendly and dog-accepting, especially with the pandemic, people always have that COVID puppy, but just tossing that out there. One more thing while I'm doing my wish list, can we, as a town, ever allow for brush pickup? The more and more urban we get, the more and more it seems necessary. We thankfully have woods all behind our houses, not an issue, but not everybody in my neighborhood does, and so just saying that might be something really thoughtful to consider as we grow and grow and grow, you know, so.
Thank you for, thank you for your thoughts on that, that's-
I appreciate your hard work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we're glad you made the long drive from Benwicki down here.
Oh, it was rough.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The item that you referenced is forefront in the council's minds.
Okay.
And it's been at strategic planning sessions and retreats for several years now, so, yep, thank you.
All righty, anyone else? An unfamiliar face is coming forward.
Brian, 165, we lost in court. Good evening. First of all, Mayor, thank you for your kind words, I appreciate them. But I would like to address the Part of Grant. I want to thank and congratulate Stacy and the staff for all your hard work in getting that done, and former town manager Hank as well. But I also feel it would be remiss not to acknowledge and give accolades to the Towns Parks and Recreation Board volunteer members, who did, participated a lot in the grant application process. I'd also like to take this opportunity to publicly thank those board members, as well as the members of many of the other boards that also participated in the public engagement for the Part of, and other things as well, but I'm thrilled that we got the grants, and I just wanted to acknowledge our boards, too.
Thank you, Susan, and you certainly caught us with our shorts down a little bit, because that's something we should have done earlier, in congratulating ourselves on receiving this. It's certainly deserving of the Parks and Rec and beautification and a number of other of our boards and committees who had a big hand in helping us develop that proposal. So thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That was 50% of the audience tonight spoke at our public comment session, so thank you very much.
Come on, guys.
No, yeah, no, yeah, very good. Council members, before we go into closed session, or any comments for the council members?
Yes, please, Mayor. Last night, we met in that beautiful Mary Alice Warren Community Center, and it was one of the first times I've been in the conference room. One thing that really caught my eye was that, a lack of artwork in our new community center and in that room. And I wanted to ask council's discussion on what you thought of going forward with a committee, probably through our staff, of applications and announcing that we would like to have an arts committee for decoration and all that would be involved in what would be appropriate, and a committee that would be formed so that we could begin decorating our community center.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, I think we've talked about that before, as a beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and I would like the judge of beauty to not be my eye. And if we could have a, if we could have a committee that would review individuals who would like to display their work, I know we built some beautiful cases for some artwork to go into, we purchased the hangers for artwork to hang from, so I wholeheartedly concur with your suggestion, and thank you very much for bringing that forward. Council, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I also, I'm not going to be the, one of the people, because I'm black and white, and color's just not my thing, but I do agree, Jane, that last night it was, it would have been nice to have a little bit more flowers or, you know, something of color kind of around us, so thank you for the suggestion, yeah.
I'd like to see dogs playing poker.
On the town square.
That's great. So, council, I guess with your agreement, let us put our heads together and figure out how we would put a committee like that together, how we would seek participation for it, basically develop what their responsibilities would be, and maybe have that in a format we could bring back in October?
I'll do my best.
Okay, we can, we can kind of flesh it out a little bit more.
October seems a little fast.
Well, I will say, I'll just add that Brian Moore, our facilities manager for the community center, has, we do have in place, as Bo mentioned earlier, the waivers, the applications for those pieces of art, as the mayor mentioned, those hangers are in place, so we are ready for art to be placed in the building. There are some cabinets there, even pottery can be displayed, so there are some, a little bit different options, and then I'll just throw in there, too, that during the Christmas holiday, it will be decorated for Christmas as well, with even more trees this year than there was last year, so that's a beauty in itself, but, yeah, as the council chooses, we are ready for art, for the-
Ms. Walsh, you made- Ms. Foster, you may have misunderstood me. I didn't suggest that we would have the committee in place.
No, no, no.
But we would have the logistics for how to select the committee.
Yeah, I'm still saying, it's quick.
I'll begin the process, and if I can't bring it to, if I don't have it all together to you, I will report that to you at the briefing.
I like to shoot for the, I like to shoot for the spot in the road rather than around the corner, if we can.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a reminder, Dr. Sutherland and I are actively working on volunteerism at the community center. So a plug, if you have an interest in volunteerism from the community center, we'd be interested in any thoughts and suggestions that you have. But we will be going to Parks and Rec on Monday. So as y'all are thinking about this arts committee type thing, if they can plug in with us, too, that would be great.
And finally, just looking at the, I'm trying to pull up the charters right now. I'm just thinking about, we've got boards and committees, and they're doing their plans of work. If there's anything that we already have that would speak to that, to tap the people who are already our volunteers and doing works and efforts, just maybe taking a peek at that.
We would look at everything. That's sort of a discussion I had earlier, was just trying to look at the big picture and see what would work best for this endeavor, because this is a totally different endeavor than anything else we've done.
I think I had in mind, yes, a separate committee, because there'd be a lot of people interested just in that, and it would give some more variety to what we offer with our volunteers. But I respect your research in it, and thank you, Dora.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council, any other comments this evening?
I have, I have a comment, or just a, I noticed in Louisville Citizen that there was the recycling data that came out in this month's newsletter. There was not a lot of explanation on that data. So as we are publishing information and data in there, like when we did the recycling numbers and things like that, it took up some space. But if we can do some kind of education, or just explaining what this tonnage means and what that means, that would be helpful. I got a few resident questions on that this week.
Okay, so I believe that would be an annual report that we would do.
Okay.
So we'll just make a note to broaden that just a little bit more.
Where the 8% is and all of that. Yep, that would be great. Thank you.
Council members, anything else?
Still the plug. Thanks, Dora. I know it's hard with all that you're trying to manage. But however, we can continuously put up whatever information that we're giving to us, making sure that people out here can see it and the folks on Channel 6.
It is extremely difficult for me to take notes and go back and forth between the pages, so I apologize.
No, no need to apologize. Just something to look at from a communications perspective.
I agree. It would be very nice to be able to show that.
If I may, I do not have these digitally, but I, we do have them at Town Hall. So if anyone would ever like to come by and take a look at them, but those are available for, if anybody would like to come and take a look at them.
We have easels. Let's post them in the lobby.
We could do that.
So anybody likes to come by?
Yeah.
See where we're gonna spend 3.4 million dollars?
That's some of our artwork that we can throw in there.
All righty, council members, anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to be going into closed session here. And Bo, would you lead us for the reason why?
Yes, this is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-31811A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or adher to or to investigate a claim charged or grievance fire against an individual public officer or employee.
Thank you.
It's not the last.
Thank you. Folks, we are gonna go into closed session. We do not anticipate coming out and taking any actions. So those of you who are here tonight, thank you very much for coming by.
Thank you.
It's really good to see you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Folks watching at home, you may want to stay tuned, or you may want to just go ahead and go on to your favorite TV show. But we do not anticipate taking any action when we come out of closed session. Would like, council members, entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Call it, Mayor.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We are going into closed session. Thank you, folks.